Thank you. All right, that concludes either of your team party's questions. I now have questions if you have further feel free to raise your hand, they'll bring it up. Jay, you were the favorite, I must tell you. I have more questions for Jay than anybody else. Nick, you were second. So due to that, Jay, we're going to start with you. Mr. Kramer. Several years ago, at this same event, you were 100% in favor of selling the Vero Beach Electric to FPL. What happened?
Well, I still am in favor of doing that. I did the, I was very energetic and it took me about a month and a half to get together the items for a partial sale, which definitely sold to FPNL. The only difference between the partial sale and the full sale is that the partial sale did also get our rate down, it didn't cause a threat to our services and it didn't raise our taxes. You know, if you ask the question, what happened, you know, I've got to, you know, refer back to the August 30 article where I outlined a partial sale before the election. You know, I was there and I outlined exactly what I was going to do. And I don't think there was any ambiguity to it.
All right. Please explain why municipal monopoly is not a monopoly. How is the City of Vero Beach Electric monopoly a free market?
That's a good question. Actually, when I was writing this, I tripped up on that myself. The only meaningful distinction I can give, thanks Mark, the only meaningful distinction I can give, and my friend Dan touched on it too. The monopoly that we have as Vero Electric is unregulated, as Dan pointed out, but we also have a representative government where the people that run that business are the city council. So every year, to the extent, every year to the extent you have an issue with this monopoly, and I'll give you that it is, that we have a meaningful way to deal with that. On the other hand, FPNL is a true monopoly. A true monopoly, once they're in place, they are regulated, we have no say in what they do as a municipality, we become mere customers, and they have to deal with, for a public service commission. And the public service commission does two things, one good, one bad. What they do good is they hold back the reins of a monopoly and say, hey, we realize you can charge any price you want, so we're here to say you can't charge anything you want. But the state of Florida also assists FPNL and we're then receiving a risk-free return of 11% a year, which is outrageously high currently. So I'm just almost done. So, well, that's basically it. So we are a monopoly, a monopoly that we're a monopoly where we have an answerable monopoly. Let's start with that.
Thank you, Nick. All right. I'm going to ask each one of you to answer this question. And why don't we just start on this end with Dan and go the other way this time. Assuming the power plant is sold, what would be your choice for the use of the land?
If the system, this is Dan's thought, if the system is sold and Vero Beach keeps the land, it's going to be a long discussion. Now, that is something that is going to require a referendum by the city if we want to sell the real estate under our city charter, if we want to lease or sell city-owned land, that must be approved by the voters. And of course, it will be a long, serious discussion about what is the best use if it is to be sold. There are good uses for the city. I don't think we can come to a conclusion this evening. It would make a fine park. It would make a fine housing development. It's possible it could be a commercial development. But one thing for certain, it's going to be put to a better use than what it's been put to now.
Once again, I don't necessarily agree with the premise of the question. I sort of agree with what I said, what Jay said, which is regardless of whether to sell or don't sell to FPNL, the days of Big Blue are limited. So Big Blue's going away one way or another. And we were having this discussion the other night, I'm, some of you know I'm quite a water man, I spend a lot of time out on our river. And, you know, enterprise that made money being a marina would be, I think, the highest and best use, and that could be surrounded with businesses and residential. However, that is a thin old piece of water, so it would be a big job to dredge that out to a point where that would make it a viable marina. We also have the problem of being quite a ways from the inlet, so would have to do a lot of study before we went that way. But as far as the development, that made money, that kept the land in the city's books and was in character with our town, I would say something marina-related.
That was Nick Thomas.
Look, Pilar Turner. I would love to see this land used for something beautiful. I would love Amalay Lloyd Bridge become a destination within our community, become a highlight, a special place. I would like you to see with some conservation, environmental aspect, whether we have a beautiful boardwalk where many people can come and enjoy the treasure of our Indian River lagoon. But as far as actual development of this area, I'd love to see us begin another process like our vision plan, pull together a group of citizens and have some kind of agreement on what we could go forward for as a vision.
Jay Kramer. You know, just giving you an example in a nutshell, I think that land would be better off in private hands, in a highest and best use environment that's compatible with our neighborhoods. We need to make sure that that land can draw income for the city, but on the other hand, needs to be in tune with the flavor of Vero Beach and the neighborhoods. However, it's kind of interesting to me that we would even be asked what would be happening with that land. Most of the decisions that have come up to us really have been single-biter deals. You know, water and sewer is a single-biter deal, FPNL is a single-biter deal. I'm finding out that we've got plans for solid waste to be a single-biter deal with waste management. Some of our parkland is a single-biter deal. I would have to be very cautious about answering the question in respect, and I'm sure there's probably people out there that already have a purpose for that that just have not yet surfaced.
I think it's fairly accurate to say that there's probably, I'm sorry, Brian Hedy, it's fairly accurate to say that there probably are some people out there that already have some plans for that property, but the land is protected by the charter and it's something that absolutely has to go before the voters. And I think that it would take a lot of study and a lot of talk, a lot of discussion, and it's something that the voters would have to consider whether or not they wanted to turn that into a money bank or to turn that into some environmentally sensitive, you know, parkland, something, a destination kind of park.
Craig Fletcher. Under no circumstances would I vote to sell that land for commercial developments, for housing or anything. If we sold that property, how long do you think that money would last on the general fund? It would, it's just, I just can't even conceive of that. Under no circumstances would I do with residential. I look at it, the first thing is that area there for a marina would be perfect because we used to have dredges or barges come in there and unload diesel fuel. It's already dredged over 20 feet right now. It'd make a beautiful combination. I look at it as a combination of a park, a walking exercise area, a marina, maybe some tennis courts, but in some way to return funds to the general, return money to the general fund to help us out with the score of the rest of the parks division. But I look at it strongly as a park, a marina, and some tennis courts.
All right. Thank you. Nick, you ready to go again?
Yes, sir.
Nick. If you think it is a good idea to use electric fund revenue to keep taxes low, why would it be a bad idea to raise utility rates enough to zero property taxes?
Okay, that's a clever one. Is that you again, Mark? Stuart, and we talked about this earlier. Stuart and I, and Vero Beach are pretty similarly situated. Again, thanks to Mark Schuman for his good work. My understanding is that Stuart, they don't have an enterprise fund that's feeding their budget, and they do pay taxes approximately twice what we do. So if I understand the question, I don't have a problem supplementing our income with our electric, with Vero Electric, simply because it's the situation that we're in. You know, if we were to snap our fingers and build another city that looked exactly like Vero Beach, we probably would use FPNL, but that's not the situation we're in. Right now, we have a business. It grew up historically, you know, Vero was the first county in this county. We were lucky enough to have the money to have a power plant, and then this development continued outside the city borders. People asked us to set that. I'm not sure I'm going to be done in 10 seconds.
30 seconds.
30, now I lost my train of thought. Generally, I tend to be, yes, a status quo type of person. What I don't want to do is in the name of being against taking money from this enterprise fund, give away Vero Electric to the first person that comes along. I mean, remember, we're not getting much for this deal. We're getting, you know, all the money that's coming in is barely going to touch our hands before it's gone again. We have a valuable business. How it got here is not particularly important, but it's a business that makes us like $5 million a year. Why, same when we give it away.
All right. Jay, on September 5th, the paper reported that you indicated you were not running again. You stated, it's just not as fun as it used to be. Two days later, you, two days later, deadline day, you and Nick Thomas dropped off your paperwork. Did you already have your paperwork filled out when you indicated you may not run? And who specifically talked you into running again?
This is Jay Kramer. I can't say who specifically talked me into running because there was quite a multitude of people who did talk me into running. It was, I got a flurry of phone calls. Quite frankly, that statement was really a way to try to get some good people to come out and run for office. You know, quite frankly, I'm a businessperson and, you know, if I'm not here, I'm out there making millions of dollars for myself, not saving millions of dollars for the people at Vero Beach. So for me, you know, if somebody else could run and do equal jobs myself, I guess it's kind of selfish of me that I could go out there and get back to business and make money for myself. However, I did have an awful lot of people who had convinced me that I needed to run again, convinced me that a lot of the programs that I started need to continue to move on. And, you know, waiting to the last minute, I would suppose that's, I guess that's a tactic that people use to make sure that a lot of people don't jump in to run against you, just being frank with that question.
All right. I'll have to admit, some of these questions appear to be lairs for some of the candidates. So we're going to avoid those. But what I'd like to do, some of them, I'd like to, we'll go back to that in a minute. I'd like everybody to answer this question. Do you believe in spending more than you earn? And then tell us why you have a particular belief on that question you have, and apply it to city government. And this time, let's start the medal with Pilar.
I absolutely do. This is Pilar Turner. I absolutely do not believe in spending more money than I earn. I have always been a fiscal conservative and will continue to do so with my own and with my city's money.
I'll agree with that. Nick Thomas, I tend to be a say-rounder myself.
This is Dan Stumpf, and I very sincerely do not believe in spending more than you earn. I've seen this problem with clients, both individuals and businesses, over the course of my practice, law practice, over 35 years. People do not know how to formulate a budget. Once they have a budget, they can't live within the budget. Unfortunately, too many of our governments have this problem. They want to spend more money than what the tax revenue is. I think there's just a problem with, in this whole country, with poor fiscal government management. Calvin Coolidge said it really good, President Coolidge, he says, there's nothing easier in public life than spending public tax revenue, because it really doesn't belong to anybody who wants to get some of that government bank. It just sits there, it's there, available for spending, and the urge to spend it is just unbearable for some candidates who don't have any fiscal control. So I definitely am a fiscal conservative, and I promise that if I'm elected as your council member, I will be as careful in spending the public money as I am in my own.
Craig Fletcher. Spending more than you earn is called bankruptcy. There have been many, many cities around the country that are literally declaring bankruptcy. I hate to, actually, I hate to face Cindy, our finance director, if we tried to do that. We have a finance director that is absolutely sterling silver quality lady, really, really holds your feet to the fire. You go down and talk to her about something, you want to see how much something costs, and she'll say, no. That's what you have to say, that's all you have to say is, no, I'm not going to spend more than I earn. That's why I still have a house of my own.
Brian Hedy. On a personal level, I'm a married man with kids, grandkids, wife, of course I spend more money than I earn. Which makes me happy to go out and earn some more, to keep the wife and the kids and the grandkids happy. Worse, as an elected official, when I was on city council, I refused to spend more money than we took in. When you spend your money, you can't spend more, you can't put the burden on our kids and our grandkids. We've heard a whole lot of talk here tonight from candidates about underfunded pensions. The reason we have underfunded pensions is because we've had city councils that didn't mind spending more money than they had coming in, and they refused to pay for the benefits earned in the year that they were earned. And I fought for that for a long time, and I continue to fight for the fiscal responsibility in not spending more money than we take in.
Jay Kramer. I think it's pretty good consensus up here that you don't spend more money than you have bringing in. Last couple of years at city council, I hope everybody has looked at the books, and we have, as a whole, have really agreed that you don't spend more than what you bring in. Certainly, I as a businessperson know the effects firsthand, but if you don't take care of your finances, you're going to get punished, and it's going to be pretty severe. Also, working bankruptcy, I have had to clean up the messes of people who have spent too much money, and have had to take businesses back on track and get them back into the private place. Certainly, in the government situation, you don't want to let this happen because it's your money and you're the one that's going to have to pay the price for it. On this issue, I would certainly hope that you people would become more engaged and watch over us politicians. Certainly, you might not have a council in the years to come that are as fiscally conservative as ourselves, but vigilance is really something that the public needs to make themselves aware of, and you need to challenge the politicians to make sure that we stay within our bounds and we don't spend more than what's coming in.
All right. Pilar, just, do we have as a city any unfunded pension obligations?
We most certainly have unfunded.
And what is the value of that?
Our unfunded pension obligation is $36 million, and we have other post-employment benefit liability for up to $40 million.
Okay, I'm just trying to establish a fact that's related to the question here. So we have about $36 million unfunded pensions, and that happens every year, correct? In other words, it grows every year?
It's continuing to grow because it's based on a rate of return of 7.75%, which we got 0.3% last year.
Okay, so then I would like the six of you to answer that question again about being fiscally responsible and not spending more than you take in. Well, it's, Pilar, you started, right?
Yes.
Then let's start with Jay and go the other way.
Jay Kramer. This was actually an interesting question because I talked to Cindy about this today. Actually, our general fund underfunding is about 63% of where it should be. In 2010, it was actually 62%. It has turned around. We are making headway on the pension. Granted, it's probably not enough. We do need to make more headway on that. However, we have reached the tipping point back in 2010, and we are coming back from that point. The pension fund certainly is something that we got to keep an eye on. It does fluctuate quite a bit. As employees pass away, the liability becomes less. As more employees retire, there is more liability to put on the fund. So realistically, we've got to keep an eye on that, make sure that we have adequate funding for those, and absolutely paying up the fund would definitely help quite a bit. Certainly, if this sale goes through, I think it is most pertinent to pay up the underfunding. And I would certainly like to make sure we get an answer at number from FPNL, just how many employees are they going to take? Because the employees that they don't take, if they exercise their retirement option, it's going to exacerbate the problem of a more severe pension issue.
All right. And the intent of asking you this question back again, all of you, is every one of you expressed that you were fiscally responsible, would not spend more than we take in, but yet we've not funded our pension plans on an annual basis at the levels they need to be funded. So I'd like you to square that fact with your previous answer.
The fact is that we have, Pilar quotes the number, $36 million worth of, not unfunded, but underfunded pension plans. The two years in 2009 and 10, when I was on city council, one of the things that I fought for continually was that the benefits for the employees be paid for in the year that they're earned. It sounded like a broken record on city council, and I continue to stand by that policy. I think the only way that we're going to stop the ever-growing underfunded pension plans is to change pension plans. Let's take what we pay the employee now, and instead of having a defined benefit, let's have a defined contribution, where the employee can take the money and put it whatever kind of IRA they want. And that's not cheating the employee out of anything that we currently give them, but it is ending the underfunded pension plans for the taxpayers, because we will have then paid for the benefit in the year that it's earned and will be done. Change it from a defined benefit to a defined contribution.
Craig Fletcher. We were handed this problem, we didn't create it. We're trying to solve it. In fact, we're paying, I think it's $3.1 million a year, trying to catch up. I'd love to paperwork to get caught up so that it wouldn't be a albatross of stone around our neck, but we're using what we have in the general fund to pay that up, and we just cannot catch up without some radical solution. And I don't have it. I'd actually not going to spend any more than I have to catch up to it. It's going to be in our face until we sell the power plant in order to cap that off. It's just knowledge we inherited.
Dan Stumpf again, and this brings up another good point, why we have to sell our electric system, our electric utility system. Fiscal conservatism in the city of Vero Beach means not having a defined benefit pension plan, because a defined benefit pension plan obligates the city of Vero Beach to make sure that there's enough money funded in the plan to pay a retired employee a defined benefit at a certain age, 62 or 65. The problem is, in years past, as Mr. Fletcher said, this problem wasn't created by the current board, but in years past, there was created a defined pension, a defined benefit pension plan, which did oblige the city to pay a defined benefit. And for whatever reason, that plan has not been well-funded. And I don't think any of us up here tonight can say specifically where the money is going to come from right now to make up this current obligation, because it is an obligation, it's a clear liability on the part of the city of Vero Beach to fund this plan. Offhand initially, I would have to say that some of the reserve that's going to be created by the sale of our electric system will be used. I'm not saying I want to wipe it all out, but some of it will probably have to be used to make good on this unfunded liability. It's unfortunate that we have to meet our liability. This is another reason why, because of the suspension problems we have, why we must sell our electric utility system.
Nick Thomas, two little points. Toby, good try for a trick question, but when I say that I don't spend more than I earn, I do have a mortgage, and I pay my mortgage payment, I don't pay my house off every day, or every week, or every year. So yes, I do carry some debt on my home, I have that quid in my own, but yeah, I think you can be a budget-conscious person and still operate with some debt. But here's the point I want to make to turn this back around on you, is that, you know, when I entered this race, and Toby didn't ask me the circumstances under which I got in, but basically, it's, sell Vero Electric, it's a really good thing, we're going to save millions of dollars, we're going to have a workwind service, oh no, now we're going to, we're going to save the union, or we're going to save the mortgage, or our pension plan. It's a moving reason. Every time the air is put out of one reason, another one gets put before you. It's not a good reason. If we need to deal with our pension plan, we need to deal with our pension plan, and we do that by looking at all the options. Selling our enterprise on Vero Electric is not the solution to that problem. They're two different issues.
So, over 20, 25 years ago, private industry gave up on having defined contribution plan, defined benefit plans that we have today. When we came to council, we were concerned with, concerned with the pensions, and I was assured that in addition to the annual pension obligation for each employee, we were contributing an additional $3 million to the pension fund every year to try to catch up with this unfunded liability. Unfortunately, the economy is still very, very low. We cannot get a 7.75% return on investment, and I don't know, who can tell me when we will? So we're continuing to fall further and further into this hole. The opportunity to reform our pension plan requires that we put in the funds of the obligation, for the current obligation. So you need a large infusion of cash to convert your plan to what I call a pay-as-you-go, a defined contribution plan, and this is what we're moving forward with.
Thank you. All right. Now I'm going to take off on that question that was asked to Nick, which he answered which he answered. Nick, you're going to get a chance to answer this. And it had to do with using the electric fund revenues to put them in the general fund to keep our taxes low. In my mind, what they were asking is a philosophical question. Could you please answer, what do you think is the appropriate relationship of that type of activity, whether it's a power plant or any other business that the governmental entity known as the City of Vero Beach might own, to put funds into the general fund versus allowing ad-halorn taxes to pay for those services which have traditionally been paid for by ad-halorn taxes? Could you give us your philosophical approach to that?
I'm not sure I have a philosophy about that. I realize that the state of the city right now is that we do have a couple of great enterprises and they make good money for us. The electric system, the water and sewer system. And it's a blessing, I think, that we don't have to pay more taxes because we have them. I certainly don't have any philosophy that would tell me to give those things away because the government has their fingerprints on them so we can pay more taxes. My philosophy is gratitude for good things we have, if that answers the question.
Well, it's fine that you started. Dan?
Thank you, Dan Stump again. I do not like the concept of using money and relying on money from the electric utility system to formulate a budget. Because as a fiscal conservative, I think the first thing we need to do is not be concerned so much as the amount of revenue that's coming to our budget, but what are the essential services that the city government should be providing to the City of Vero Beach and the residents? City of Vero Beach is not necessarily Vero Beach City Hall. But what are the level of services that our residents should have? And what's the best way that our city government can provide those services? And we just had a question earlier about the amount of unfunded pension liability that we have. And we have that because the current system that Vero Beach employs to make up and carry out their budget is not working. We are not getting enough revenue from the electric utility system of Vero Beach to pay for our services. There has to be another way. I hate to raise ad-halorn taxes, but we might have to do it a little bit. I would encourage all of you this evening to go home and take a look at your total tax bill and what it is. I think you're going to find, like, mine is no different in concept from yours. City of Vero Beach's taxes is about ten percent of your total real estate property tax bill. So we're talking about a very small amount. The amount of money that you're going to save every month from selling this system is going to far exceed any possible real estate tax increase. Thank you.
Craig Fletcher. As I understand the question, it was our philosophy, right? My philosophy is that smaller government is good. The ad-halorn taxes should support the services. And you can't get much simpler than that. I know in years, the power plant has been artificially supporting our low tax ad-halorn taxes. And that's going to change. We're going to have, it's not going to be any huge increase in taxes. There are scared activists out there saying that, oh my gosh, we're going to be doubling our taxes. It's not going to happen. It just simply isn't going to happen. It's only fifteen percent of our budget we're looking for and we can work that out. But smaller government, to me, is much better. Having ad-halorn taxes reflect your services is the way it should be done.
Brian Hedy, and certainly smaller government is a good thing, but there's a balance. And if you really think that we should continue just to shrink government, shrink government, shrink government, then I see guys, you take a trip with me to one of my volunteer trips to help in Haiti and you see what smaller government does not accomplish. And, you know, it's interesting. You get questions from the same people. You get questions, if you catch hell, about the power plant and the other enterprise funds contributing to the general fund. And that's not a good thing, you're told. And then they want you to compare Vero Beach with Sebastian, where Vero Beach has more employees. Well, yeah, we do have more employees. But if you want to compare Vero Beach with anybody, compare the ad-halorn tax in Vero Beach, which is pretty low. And one of the reasons it's low is because we have these enterprise funds and we have these employees that are making money. I think this whole question, this whole philosophy with respect to government being a business, is pretty well going to end. We're on that path. We're on that road. I don't see anything stopping it. We're going to sell the power plant and that's pretty well going to end this whole line of question.
Toby, could you repeat the question or whatever?
Sure, sure. The question's not about selling the power plant. The question is using enterprise funds, those dollars, to pay for what has traditionally been paid for through ad-halorn taxes. Are you okay with that? Do you think ad-halorn taxes should pay for those services? Should there be visibility? You know, just expound on that concept as to where you stand, your philosophy.
Okay. Jay Kramer. First of all, I want to make sure everybody kind of gets the idea of essential services and that is basically a service that private industry does not take up and that government pretty much has to take up the slot there. Years ago, FDNL did not want to serve this area. And when I'm saying years ago, I'm saying pre-1970s. Vero Beach had to step up. We had to build a power plant. I mean, I've told crazy stories that we had to run on certain days because people wanted iron in their clothes and it took so much energy to do that. But, you know, the reason that we have the electric system is because it was an essential service. Now, you do have private industry that can take that over. So the question is, is how do you unwind the process? You know, government had to step in. They had to get in here. It's the same with the water and sewer. Certainly, if government had not stepped in and did water and sewer, you wouldn't have houses, you wouldn't have development. Government had to do that. So the question is, how do you unwind the system? And that is basically for private industry to step up and sell the systems off. However, I would certainly hope that if you sell the systems off, that you do it in a competitive bidding process. Certainly, just having competitors just show up on your doorstep and saying, "We agree with all these philosophies. Why don't you just give it to me and skip all the RFP process, skip the bidding process?" I really do agree with that. But as far as essential services, that private industry can competitively take them over, I think we should do that.
Utilizing enterprise funds in lieu of ad-halorn taxes created many of the problems that we existed in the past ten years within the city, allowing it to grow, five hundred and fifty employees, those excesses, the union benefits that were negotiated that are absolutely controllable. What taxpayer would have said, "Yes, I would have paid for triple overtime"? Or, "I wouldn't allow them to bank vacation in sick time"? But these were abuses that could happen because they no longer had to come to the taxpayer to ask for those funds. They could merely hide those costs along with this transfer. It would definitely need a more transparent city government. You deserve to know what your government costs.
All right. That concludes our questions. We would like for you all to make your closing statements. And we start with Craig on opening statements. While we start, Dan, go the opposite direction. Dan, are you ready? Two minutes.
Thank you, Toby. This is Dan Stump. Again, at the risk of sounding repetitive, the main reason I'm running for a city council is that I do want to sell the city electric system. I think you have heard good responses this evening from all candidates sitting up here. The best responses have been arguments in favor of selling the system. We simply cannot continue to maintain it. It's not sufficient. And I don't want to have to rely upon other utility commissions in the state of Florida to get power. You know, if this, people are complaining about, oh, there's an amount of money, there's a penalty we have to pay to your landlord or utility commission. If we can get our power from some other place. I think someone mentioned Winter Park, they had a good system. You know, all we're doing is substituting one inefficient power provider for another. The best power provider in the state of Florida is FDNL. They have the lowest rates. They're a good, strong, efficient company and they have government regulation that the City of Vero Beach simply does not have and we can't have. You can't expect five city council members, irregardless of their background, to be able to run in this day and age a utility system on par with FDNL. It simply can't be done. However good their intentions are, and all of these candidates are well-intentioned, this has been a fun campaign for me. I've enjoyed speaking in these forums and there's been at least a half a dozen of them. And I really want to thank all the candidates here this evening for their fine participation. But my position remains firm. I will not waver if you elect me as your council member. I'm telling you this evening, if you vote me in, I'm going to conclude the sale of FDNL. I will not change my vote and I won't make a partial sale. Thank you for your attention.
Nick Thomas, thank you. I think my friend Dan ended where I wanted to start, which is, when you do the calculus of who you need to vote for in this case, if you are to return Mr. Fletcher and Mayor Turner to their seats along with Tracy Carroll, you don't need Dan. You got your three. Right now, it's three to two. If you are pro-referendum, on the other hand, you're obviously going to go Jay. Jay's pro-referendum. And Mr. Weiner's pro-referendum. So you need, if you're pro-referendum, Nick Thomas is your guy. Here's the little twist I want to throw at you. If you, like me, are pro-referendum but ready to just have the darn thing over with, we'll do the referendum, we'll make it fair, we'll make it fair and do whatever the people want to do. But I am, as I said on the campaign this summer, I am eager. This is not what I want to talk about, FDNL. I want to get past this folly and get on with the real work of what our city council should do. So I'm going to ask you that if you want to vote for Jay and if you want to support Mr. Weiner, that you add me to the council. I will be reliable. I personally, I've been very clear personally against the deal, but I pledge to you that I will support referendum. And here's my little twist. After you voted for me and Jay, I'm going to suggest you think about Pilar as your third vote. And not because I agree with her even remotely with regard to the FDNL deal, but rather, I think, and from what I've gathered, she has in her heart positive feelings about our environment and wants to turn our attention to where it should be. And as you may know, I'm very pro-the-lagoon and our environment. And I think Pilar still has a lot of good work in her once we get the FDNL thing behind us.
Hello, Mayor Turner. Thank you very much for your kind words, Mr. Thomas. We'll make this great. So say, we are blessed to live in a very special community of great natural beauty. The key to preserving the quality of the life here is to put our city on a firm financial foundation. This is our opportunity. Let's not let it slip away. Please vote Turner for proven leadership and commitment to the city. Thank you.
Jay Kramer. I sincerely want to thank all of you for coming out and listening to us. I'm certain that sitting out there and watching us is probably not the best use of your time. But I want to really thank you for being involved in the political process and keeping us on our toes and keeping us sharp. The last two years have been quite an enjoyment. I certainly enjoy expressing my conservatism and more importantly, I certainly enjoy helping out the people of Vero Beach. We've had a lot of great projects gone through. We've certainly had a lot of challenges that happened these last two years. We certainly have this FDNL issue that just certainly will not go away. I certainly would like to make sure that this comes to referendum. We get the facts on the table and people just voted and we can move on with the business of the city. Certainly, the city is one that is truly a treasure on the coast. If you've done a lot of traveling, every time you leave Vero Beach, you begin to see just how special Vero Beach is. And certainly, I would like to make sure that we continue to keep Vero Beach a very special place. And we can only do that by making sure that we make good fiscal conservative moves that keeps us on a firm footing. I would ask you to vote number six. Please vote for Jay Kramer. I certainly want to continue working for you.
Brian Hedy, someplace towards the middle of the table here and on the ballot, on someplace towards the middle of the ballot. And as you're looking down, make sure you stop on the Brian Hedy line and connect those dots. The Tea Party, thank you for giving the public the opportunity to hear this. And thank you, WTTV, for broadcasting this live. I don't know whether you intend to run any reruns on this. And Keith, thank you and Vero News for, again, covering this. And the last time you put this on YouTube, which I think was a great service for the community. They could watch this function and this debate in its entirety. And it's a great service. And thank you and your employers for providing that to the community. Many people know that I spent a lot of time helping some veterans out. And I was driving a blind veteran to a local doctor last week. And I'm sitting in the waiting room. Somebody walked in and, "You're Mr. Hedy!" And I says, "Yeah, I get a lot of that." Talking about, "I know you from television. You're Mr. Hedy." I said, "Yeah, yeah, that's me. I am." And he says, "I want to tell you, you cost me a lot of time." I said, "Well, how is that?" He says, "Well, when you were on city council, I used to watch the meetings more than once." And I said, "Sorry about that." He says, "No, no, I wanted to thank you." Because I'll tell you what you do. You ask good questions, Brian, and you don't let them not give you an answer. And thanks a lot. We really appreciate the good questions. You want to hear more good questions? Put me back on city council, Brian Hedy.
Craig Fletcher. Toby, I do want to thank you for all the work you've done on half the vote in Irriter County in general. And I will make this pretty short. Two years ago, when Lard Turner and I started to run for election and wanted to support the state, they told us, everybody told us, this couldn't be done. Today, I think everybody is agreeing that, yes, it can be done. We've overcome some huge hurdles that have allowed us to go forward from where we are now. We're well on the way to getting this done. We all are going to read all the contracts. We're all going to review all the paperwork. We're all going to take the time that we need to put into this to get it done. You're going to have this opportunity and this opportunity only to make the city whole and start out with a new, a new city. Please go to the polls, no matter who you vote for. But I would certainly ask you to vote for Craig Fletcher in number six. Thank you very much.
All right. We'd like to thank the candidates for being here today and taking the heat. It's been a long process. You have a little further to go. Stay strong, stay with it, but let's show our appreciation for the candidates. Hang on, we're not quite done. I'd like to thank the audience for being here tonight. I'd like to thank those listening in on WTTV. And I'd like to remind you that the Irriter Tea Party has three tenets that we stand for. They are fiscal responsibility, free market solutions, and constitutionally limited government. Okay? You didn't hear me saying anything about smaller government? You didn't hear me say anything about smaller government. You heard me say constitutionally limited government. Hopefully somewhere out there, there's an appropriately sized government. Okay? You heard me say fiscal responsibility. We expect that on the part of every citizen and every governmental entity. And free market solutions. We think when you take free men and women and you place them in a capitalistic system, history has proven you will generate more prosperity and more wealth than in any other system known to man. You mix that with our founding principles, a strong moral compass, Judeo-Christian values, and then you start what I heard the gentleman from FPL say the other day, the virtuous cycle. We turn our face back to those less fortunate, and we help our friends and our neighbors. And it's responsible because it's done locally. Now, we ask that, when you go to the polls, that you understand that this country has gotten itself in numerous fiscal problems. It is not just the City of Vero Beach, you heard some of that tonight, but this election is big. You're going to vote at the state level, at the local level, and at the federal level. And we ask you to keep those tenets because those are the challenges that face our country today. Thank you for being here. God bless America.